It's not just that I can't see it with my messed up eye, right? Ah, there we are. Now it is. Okay, all right. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the Morgantown City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, November 29th. The time is 7:19 PM. We're in the Monongalia County Commission Chambers at 243 High Street. As a reminder, Committee of the Whole Meetings of Morgantown City Council are intended to provide an opportunity for council to receive information, ask questions, and identify policy options in an informal setting. No official action will be taken at this meeting. We have this evening the following items. First, we have two presentations, beginning with the Morgantown Public Library Annual Report with Director Sarah Palfrey.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Uh, thank you for having me. It's always a pleasure to be here. We're gonna talk a little bit tonight about some challenges, but then also make sure we talk about the good things, 'cause that's what we all wanna hear right now. But so, we'll start with the tough stuff. You know, there's been a lot of conversation lately about downtown in general, the library in particular, and I want to, you know, reassure council and the city and our library users that the library does have a code of conduct in place for all of our visitors and our patrons. Our goal and purpose and our code of conduct is to protect the rights of individuals using library services, assist staff members in conducting library business effectively, and preserve library materials and facilities. We try and keep it really simple, which of course, the more simple you make it, sometimes the harder it can be to enforce. But a few years ago, we went from a five, six-page list of things you're not allowed to do in the library, which were all added after specific incidences, to a much more general respect. Respect yourself, you know, you have to be dressed and behave appropriately based on our basic social conduct, you know, contract of how you conduct yourself in public to use the library. The only time we really enforce this really is when people come in in bathing suits and bikinis. But, you know, respect others. Your behavior in the library should not interfere with other people's ability to use the library or for staff to do their job. Weapons are not allowed in the library, except of course, those carried by law enforcement officers. And we ask that people respect the space. It's a public space used by a lot of people in a variety of ways. Patrons must treat library materials, furniture, equipment with care and use them as intended. Patrons may not enter non-public work areas unless escorted by library staff, and theft or damage of materials, furnishing, or equipment or premises will not be tolerated. We also have a zero tolerance policy for any illegal activity in the library or on the premises. It's not illegal to be in front of the library. It's not illegal to, you know, hang out on the sidewalk if you're not blocking somebody's way into the building, if you're not blocking the book drops, or, you know, again, people's, other people's ability to use the space. It's also not illegal to just be in the library all day. We have a lot of people who spend hours using the space, and, you know, as long as we're all on the same page as, you know, reasonable library activity, we're good. If there is illegal activity taking place, we will call the police to help us escort people out of the building. We don't do it lightly. We don't do it unless there is a real need or reason, and it generally doesn't happen without first giving people a warning. Recently, we've instituted a more specific sort of warning system for behavior-type issues. Again, if we're talking about illegal activity, it just goes straight to the police to intervene. But we do have on occasion to trespass people from the library. I am not a fan of indefinite bans. I think that there's a lot of people who have, who make bad choices. We all have bad days, and people deserve the chance to come back to the space. So, we will give people timelines on bans. If you've done, if you've, it's almost always threatening staff, which gets you banned from the library, you know, some sort of activity that then we ask you to leave, and if you can just leave, you can come back the next day. If you can't just leave and you're gonna threaten a person or the building or other patrons, then you're not welcome to come back for an extended period of time. And that's when we will call the police and have them intervene. Of course, people, people change, people wanna come back, you know, we will always entertain those options, or we will set it for just a period of time based on the severity of the interaction. All of our staff is trained to de-escalate situations, where we all have different abilities to do this because, you know, it's hard to operate through being yelled at or, or literally being threatened. But it's always where we start, right? We want to de-escalate a situation, we wanna interrupt a situation before it becomes a problem. We always strive to use an empathy-driven approach to operate from kindness as much as we can, but I have to, there's a balance, right? I'm trying to protect my staff, I want them to come back to work the next day, we also want people to feel welcome in the library. We're not always gonna get it right. And for a long time, I think we've really, we've not been very firm with our boundaries about what's okay and what's not okay. And so, we are trying to improve that situation for our staff while also trying to not limit access to the building for as many people as possible. It's pretty much an impossible line to walk, honestly. Like, I mean, I can see everybody's faces nodding and agreeing on different parts of what I'm saying and disagreeing with what I'm saying, and I could just ignore the whole thing and not say it, but it's not easy. And, you know, we know, we know our patrons, all of them. We celebrate, you know, their successes, their challenge, you know, we work through them with their challenges, we make space for lots of other organizations to meet with people. It's a safe space for a lot of people, and we want that to continue. The trouble is everybody's idea of safety is different, right? And, you know, we're working through it as best we can too, and, you know, doing the best we can, but it's not easy. Anytime I have a voicemail complaint about somebody being kicked out, I also have a voicemail complaint about how we're not doing enough to make the library a welcoming place for families, or, or it's in the paper, or, you know, it's, it's a public space, people have a lot of very personal feelings about it, and I understand that, and so do our staff too, right? Like, they can't not wanna come to work every day and come to work and do the good work. So, you know, we want to keep what we're doing centered in our core values as best we can. And the priorities of these change, and there's both a public-facing and a staff version of all of these values. You know, we wanna provide innovative service that's welcoming and fun for our community. Our staff wants to participate in that just as much as our public does. Learning, we foster community well-being by offering programs, resources, and experiences, and we apply that to our staff. We have a monthly learning experience for the staff, we do continuing education for Stories, we believe that stories are powerful and add meaning and value to our lives, and especially when they're shared with others. This can be in books, in movies, in audio, in music, and in personal stories and lived experiences. experiences that people share with us at the library. And those stories come from everywhere. And we do value them, and we do honor them when people share them with us. And inclusion, we honor human diversity by offering access to resources that present multiple views, and we provide inclusive opportunities for all. When we try to make everyone feel welcome, sometimes other people don't feel welcome, right? And this is where we go back to like, the easy boundary of we won't accept illegal activity in the library, we won't accept hate speech in the library. If your, what you're doing makes it so someone else can't use the library, then that's where it's gone too far, and, and it's not okay. I don't look at any of these as checkboxes. They're all journeys. They're for us, for the community, and they're all going to change as, over time, as we grow in their priorities. The last few years have been difficult for everybody. We kind of moved on from the idea a long time ago about returning to normal, right? Like, things are just different. We are, we are, people are using the library in very different ways, but our usage continues. This is a really overview snapshot of our fiscal year. This is where, how we keep our statistics from July 1st to June 30th. So our checkouts have really rebounded from our, we started using five-year averages when we closed for part of the year in 2020 because they just didn't, the stats looked weird when you just look at something when you're only open for part of the year. So I think it gives a little bit better view of, of where the usage has really changed. You'll see our big, the visitors, this is across all six locations is what's really changed a lot. You know, there's not as many people walking in the buildings, which I think sometimes then makes us as staff feel those interactions way more deeply, both the good and the more difficult, because there's, there's fewer of them. There's a lot less of the just sort of like rope checking things in and out, and people are really looking for those very personal connections when they come in the building, which is wonderful, but it can also be a lot to handle. So we, the second, since the end of the summer, we've actually seen visits really start to increase across the board, even, even, pick up even more speed than we saw before. I always use the new library cards as sort of a health indicator, you know, that people are still finding their way to the library. And so I was really pleased to see that that went back up above the, the five-year average. So some of our, our highlights from the last year, our summer reading program was back in full swing this summer. We had a great time with oceans of possibilities. We participate in a national summer reading programs. We usually use their theme. This one coming up this summer is All Together Now, yeah, which focuses on community and building community and kindness. And so we're really going to lean into that hard and can't wait to, we've got a lot of great partnerships with community organizations in the works already. Steph put together 1,200 activity kits to distribute at five locations. This is sort of a leftover from COVID when we weren't really doing in-person programs, but then we went back to in-person programs this summer, but people still really love the kits because it gives a family a chance to do something at home or take them on vacation with them. And we had more than, more than 400 kids sign up this summer, and I think that's an all-time high for the adults at 194. So it would be great to see us break the 200 mark on that this summer. Storytime and Read Baby Read are back in full swing, both here and at Cheat. The first half of the year attendance was very hit or miss, like two or 20, and nothing in between. It's hard to do a program when two people show up, but it's also hard when you have 20 babies in the room. It's gotten a little more consistent, some things, as we've been able to offer programs at more consistent times over the last couple of months. We've seen more consistent attendance and have been able to have, you know, more conversations with kids and families about what they want to see. Smiling kids, right? You can't go wrong. It's why we do this most days. They, the love for, for stories and books and telling you every animal fact you could possibly imagine under the sun for Minecraft or Pokemon is what gets us out of bed in the morning. So Big Family Book Club was also back again this summer. This year, sponsored by the Shelley Marshall Foundation. This is a, another program that started during COVID that now is just, I feel is almost one of our signature programs for the year, and just love it. We, we purchased a number of books, a couple hundred books, and distributed them to families, and then they sign up, and we send them postcards throughout the summer with discussion questions and activities, and so they get to do the program on their timeline, on their schedule. And then we hosted a virtual meeting with Grace Lynn, and she, she was phenomenal. She had the kids, she taught them how to draw dragons throughout her talk, and so it was really nice to add that aspect in where we had a, a public gathering, and the kids all talked about the book and how much they loved it. And it was really fantastic, and we're in the process of choosing the book for next summer now. So we have had a, like most people, like most organizations, a significant number of staff turnovers over the last year. I think more than a third of our staff has been there for less than a year, including half of our branch managers have been in their position for less than a year. That's a lot of training. It takes a lot of time and, and effort and conversations to, to get people up to speed. It seems simple, right? You sit at the desk. That's what we do. But there's a lot, there's a lot to it there for everybody to learn. But we've, we all added in two new positions this year to, James is our brand-new assistant director, and we changed the focus of this job to be the Morgantown Library Manager. So, you know, I'm the director of the library system, but then also I was trying to run the day-to-day operations of the Morgantown Library, and there's too many crises in a week with six facilities to do all of that. So James has taken over the day-to-day operations of the library so that he's more present, and it's been a really good fit. He is a, he worked at WVU for a little while, but a new graduate from University of Kentucky's Master's Library Science Program and is doing a fantastic job, has a lot of great ideas that we'll see very soon. And Emily is our brand-new Outreach Programs and Experience Coordinator. This was a grant-funded position through the West Virginia Library Commission with some ARPA funds that were made available to help us get out of the building a little bit, to meet up with other organizations as we all sort of started to relaunch different community events and things like that. This is another one of those things that used to just die in my inbox, emails from organizations, hey, we'd like to partner with the library. And so now Emily handles all of that, and she's doing a great job getting out to senior centers and working with WIC and a lot of other groups that we've been wanting to work with for a long time, but just didn't have the capacity to, to meet with them. So we're very excited about those two new additions. This year, we have, this is our, our current year fiscal '23 budget, which had a couple of improvements to it, which we are, we're glad to see, one from the city of Morgantown, but then also from the state as the census numbers reset and we got a larger portion of the grants to public libraries because of population increase. So we're just over the 2 million mark for our total budget, which is exciting, but it's also still significantly less than what other large libraries in the state operate on, on a per capita level. And like so many, like everybody, you know, we're dealing with inflation issues and the need to increase salaries. As an example, oh no, my number's all moved. Ah, they were so pretty before. That's what happens when you change Google Slides to PowerPoints. So the, one of the easy things to see a real cost and inflation affecting the library, of course, is our materials budget. The cost of books has gone up pretty drastically, but particularly, it's gone up in the digital book world. So you can see, this is just one, this is one title that we purchased last year. So we bought one, one hardback book would cost us, our discount price, $17. It currently has one, one hold on it. We also bought an audiobook version on CD, which was $43.99, and we bought a large print version at $32.29. Then we had, we bought an ebook version of it, which is only good for 24 months, and then it expires, and we have to buy it again. And that ebook version costs $67.99, and there's 132 holds on it. The e-audio version, they, which used to always be ones that we got to keep forever, and they didn't expire. Now the audiobooks are under this licensing as well for a lot of publishers. And so again, it goes away in 24 months, and there's, it's $129.99 and has 117 holds. We are part of an ebook buying consortium to help with those hold numbers, but those, that's also why the holds are so high. So we buy a lot of copies of, of popular books, and they cost a lot of money. And, I mean, there are states that are actually trying to sue publishers over the unfair pricing models for libraries. This could be a whole other soapbox for a very long time because there's, we buy ebooks, we offer ebooks on two different platforms, through Overdrive, the Libby app, and through Hoopla, and between the two of them, there's probably 26 or 27 different purchasing models, and none of which are favorable. We get, so I, I do all the ebook ordering, and I run the list at least every 30 days for requests. We try and order twice a month for ebooks because there's so many requests, but there's usually between 75 and 80 and 90 requests every 30 days for titles that only one person wants. So they're like ridiculous massive spreadsheets. And we want, if, if we know somebody wants it and they're going to check it out, you know, we prioritize buying those things. But then for the ebook world, it means we're not buying, we're not curating that collection at all. It's, it's what people are asking for. And it's very, it is pretty varied, but, you know, it's popular stuff. It's mostly bestsellers, romances. It's a lot of things that have been past their 24 months. There's a certain book that was very popular, and we had, I don't even know, probably close to 20 copies within the consortia for people to borrow that were 24-month books. And then the movie came out at like 21 months. And so the holds all went back up through the roof again, and we had to rebuy, we didn't rebuy that, all of the copies, but we had to rebuy a number of copies. So, books, good. Publishers, questionable. Don't put that there. No, it's challenging, right? Like, we want to buy what people want to read. We want to buy them, the books in the containers that people are accessing them in, but it's creating a budget crunch or a realigning of budgets that is challenging. So we had 329,729 total checkouts. That's both physical and digital. And then I broke it down a little bit for you there so you could see. You know, our physical borrows are in, still increased over last year. That is not, that's not across the board, that, for every library. Our, our children's material circulation is huge. The bulk of that happens at Morgantown. People, I mean, on a, on a Saturday, the overwhelming majority of books that we check out are children's materials. Actually, if you add up all the categories there, it's almost equal, kids' books and adults and DVDs. The families love to come to Morgantown Library. They are, we are so fortunate that families of Monongalia County value reading the way that they do. We have, there's one family that uses the Cheat Library regularly, that they check out so many books that they return their books on a different day than they checked them out because it's so overwhelming to the, to the staff to handle all of it. And you can see that the digital library borrows and retrievals, retrievals are what we use for things like classes and lessons and things like that, also continues to increase. You know, we saw this huge spike in 2020 with so many people being at home or not wanting to go to public spaces and digital borrows, and everybody's like, it'll go back down. It didn't go back down. It's convenient. It's easy, and, and people love it. So we continue to see growth. A 4% increase in borrows for any library system is still significant. So here's some of our, our great families that, that love the library. Our Read to Rover program is incredibly popular. Most months, it's full. You can sign up for a time slot to read to a therapy dog. The governor's wife, Kathy Justice, is instituting a similar program in elementary schools across the state. It is a fantastic way for kids to build confidence as a reader, to build fluency. The dog doesn't judge you. The dog isn't also doing the dishes while trying to help you do your homework. The dog just sits and listens and looks adorable. And we've got some great dogs through an organization that, they come every month. I think this month, it's, it's usually the last Thursday of the month. For December, it'll be earlier than that because of the holiday, but it's really, it's wonderful. We would love to expand programs like this that focus on elementary-age kids because there are a lot of elementary-age kids who are really struggling with reading levels right now because of the disruptions to how, you know, how we had school for a couple of years. It's impacted some kids, and, and they could use a little extra support. One of our other big changes over the last year or so was to our book selection team. We used to have really just two people who picked most of the books for the library, and they did a great job, but I think having more people involved gives us a wider variety of influences, and we all find different places that we like. We find book lists and new authors, and it gives us room to try more things. We went from about two people to six people just at Morgantown, and then all the branches also added in additional staff to select, and then there's sort of like a book team leader at each place that reviews the orders before we place them. But everybody gets a chance to put things in the cart, plus of course, patron recommendations and things like that. But I'm very proud of our collection. I think it, it is, it's full of wonderfully popular and accessible titles for all kinds of readers, but then we put a lot of challenging books in there that may result in an actual challenge at some point, but like, that's fine because, you know, sometimes you know what you want to read, and other times you want to find something, you want to discover something. And if we don't put new books on the shelves, then you lose out on that wonder. And this was one of the complaints that we heard when the library was closed for COVID or for when we were requiring masks and people weren't comfortable coming, that they missed out on wandering around in the shelves. And to, and to me, that is missing out on finding something unexpected. So maybe it's an author you've never heard of, maybe it's a cover that looks different from anything you've ever chosen before, but we've been very intentionally purchasing more books from a wider variety of authors, from, you know, really focusing on making sure we've got some. From, you know, really focusing on making sure we've got some um, you know, fiction that represents our community. And what it looks like. And then as a staff, reading those books as well, so that we're better able to suggest and recommend them when people say, I wanna try something different. Book challenges across the country are massive right now. It is a huge, huge threat to the library. And it is what I think every time I see my voicemail light blinking that, you know, or the email with a terrible subject heading. Of like, I need to talk to you. I'm like, oh no. You know, it's gonna happen, right? Because, cause it's happening everywhere. But it's just, it's another one of those things that like weighs on us where we wanna do a good job. We wanna put things in front of people that are challenging. And just cause a challenging book sits there on the shelf doesn't mean you have to read it. You can read the thing that you came in for instead. And you know, I appreciate the council members that I've spoken to about this, about our concerns, about, about what's going on. And the potential um legislation that we might see and things along those lines. And it is, it means a lot to me to know that we have your support, should we find ourselves in that situation. I have a long policy that I can share with anybody about how we choose books, should they want to know. But like, this is, this is, this is our favorite. Getting to select, select the books and, and find those connections for people. I'm probably talking too much. Digital library, we've added a couple of new things, including Canopy, which is a streaming video service. There are phenomenal things on here. There's international films, there's documentaries, you can stream BBC. You can totally binge entire seasons of BBC, but you have to do it quickly, cause you only get it for like three days. So like, true binging. And then you move on to the next one. Canopy works like Hoopla, where you get a set number of credits a month. There's also a huge kids' collection on there, and that is unlimited access. You check it out once during the month, and then you have access to it for the, the calendar month. And it's full of read-along books, um, short videos, PBS shows, Sesame Street, Sesame Street in Spanish. I think there's some other foreign language on there. I think Blippi is on there. I know. I, I was just introduced to Blippi this weekend, so. We've also added Universal Class and Law Depot this year. These are two other digital assets that Universal Class. Uh, has actual continuing education credits on there for a number of professional fields. And Law Depot has ready-to-use simple legal documents that you can download, such as leases or bill of sale. Power of attorney, those types of things. And it is specifically geared to West Virginia, and it's all free with your library card. So what's next? Oh, I wasn't turning my pages. I don't even know if I said what I was supposed to say. This is Vanessa, the pigeon. Vanessa came to Storytime at Cheat Library, and eighty-five people showed up to meet her. So.
That library is not that big.
That library is not that big at all. Um, Vanessa's a rock star. Uh, she did a great job, and she stayed calm. But we don't know what's next, and that's the fun of it, right? Like, we, we, we like our tried and true stuff, but then we like to try something new, like pigeon story time. So we hope to see the return of more Storytime things. We really hope to uh implement some new programs. To help our elementary students who need some more time to uh get familiar with reading. And become more confident in loving reading and it not being something they have to do at school. We're gonna continue to focus on having a well-trained staff. I, I don't expect the turnover rate to change anytime soon. We are sorry to lose a couple of our longtime part-time people to really fantastic full-time jobs. So, you know, we wish them well, even though we were sad to see them go. We've tried a few things for adults. They are harder to figure out than kids. Uh, but we had a little fun in the fall with a um, Brew's Bingo, Books and Brew's Bingo. Where you could visit a variety of downtown businesses and check out a lot of different brews. Anything from beer to kombucha to coffee and tea, um, and earn yourself a prize for, for visiting and reading. Uh, we're still hoping to add a digital navigator position to the library, somebody that can really help improve our digital literacy skills of our community. Uh, we have a couple of grants out about that. Um, nobody likes to give grants to pay people. It's always our problem. But I'm really, I'm very passionate about that project, and we really wanna see it get funded. So thank you for listening, as always. I'm happy to entertain questions or comments.
Does anyone have any questions for Director Paul Free?
Um, just out of curiosity, first of all, my, my, I don't know if you saw me, but my jaw was almost on the ground when you were telling us the prices. The audiobooks, because I have recently gotten really into audiobooks. But just out of curiosity, um, do we buy the books off of Libby? And then Libby is able to kind of rent those out to the folks that are using their Morgantown library card? Or are we buying those off of, are they like?
From the publisher.
Yeah.
We license them, so the, they don't, we're looking at some other options. As Overdrive is the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the library ebook world. They have the platform that runs the Libby app. So we do buy those, we, we purchase those licenses, and some, a lot of them are one copy, one user. So we buy it, we get to keep it, as many people can use it at, but one percent of the time, just as if it was a real book you were taking off the shelf. They negotiate the price with publishers, and publishers negotiate prices with the author. And you know, it's a, the authors are not the ones winning here, for the most part. And so many of the authors are on board with libraries and pushing back with these pricing models, because that's how people find them, right? When I read that review on, on another librarian, librarian's blog about an, an advanced reader copy. That they picked up somewhere, and it's the first time we put that author in our library, that's how people find it. And then they love it, and they will go and buy it, because people like to do that. And then we will continue to buy those books, and it grows. And authors know this, because they're readers and library lovers too. So it's, it's basically, uh, publishers think that because it's digital, it's never gonna go away. And so apparently they don't know libraries very well, because they're like, surely that book would wear out, and you'd replace it after twenty-six uses. And I'm like, have you met us? Because like, we're gonna keep that book as long as we possibly can till it falls apart. Probably a hundred circulations or more for a really popular book. Kids' books might be a little different if you've met kids, but. So it's a weird, it's a weird situation. Maryland has actually made more progress than anybody else in trying to enact legislation. That, that basically saying that as a, a, a library by Maryland code, you have to pay a fair market price for things. And that this is not a fair market price. Like, that's the, the angle that they're taking to, to try and get some resolution. The other option is things like Canopy and um, Hoopla, where instead of purchasing items. We just subscribe to their platform, and then we pay a fee, um, a cost per use. So every time you check something out, we get charged for it, which is really nerve-wracking going into it. But they are really good at projecting how much it's gonna cost. And um, and that's why we limit it to a certain number a month, which to the chagrin of our comic book readers on Hoopla. Because they, you know, if you read comic books, you can go through six pretty quickly. But that's why families have lots of cards. Did that answer?
Yeah.
I know, it's really, it is astounding when you see the price. Don't get me started on Danielle Steele, and how many books she comes out with in a year, and how many times we have to do. And James Patterson, and like all those really big authors, you know. That example in particular was Stephen King, his latest fairy tale. Yeah, I know. But don't feel guilty about it. We still want you to read them.
Just don't request any new ones.
I had, I had read about this last week, um, about that, that issue. Basically price gouging you guys for these books, but um, I guess I had some follow-up questions just from my own knowledge. But can, can books and, or authors work with multiple publishers? I mean, I would imagine somebody like Stephen King probably could.
Yes, so we see, we find, this happens to us a lot too, is that an author, the first two books, say. They are, they're writing a, a mystery series. Their first three books in the series might be a smaller press. And we can buy those books at a relatively inexpensive price as ebooks, and when we get them as one copy, one-user versions, which is our ideal. And then they get popular, and so they get, they go to a different publisher that's gonna pay them more money for their next couple of books. And now we have to buy their books on a different pricing model, and you know, maybe we can only get a twelve-month book or a twenty-four month. And then, so now we've got this series. If you know anything about us, we like things in order. And so now we've got this series that all expires at different times, or that we can't buy access to those first books anymore, and it, spreadsheets, lots of. It makes me crazy, like, because people like to read books in a series order, and we'll get a request for book number three. And we can no longer buy book number one anymore, because the author's no longer with that publisher, and the publisher won't sell it anymore. It's crazy, right? I know.
Legally, and you may not know the answer, so, but is there a license that you might have on physical books? Could you possibly somehow reproduce a physical book digitally?
That is being explored by uh some people who are better suited than we are to just see if they'll get sued for it. We are watching. I am watching it closely. I actually am going to uh, a conference at the end of the week. Where some people who are working on that project are, are gonna be talking about that. Right, we've bought the book, why don't we have, can we legally make a copy and, a digital copy and loan it out? Yeah, people are working on it.
On the media, so. Okay, I have other questions. Any answer one of them? What, like, um, so you said per capita, you're one of the lower libraries in this state?
We're in the middle of the pack.
Middle, okay.
Yeah, I mean, Canal, Cabell, they're like double what we are, close to it. And every library system, it, it's always apples to oranges, which is the hard part, right? Like, we don't, Canal has much larger population than us. Cabell's about the same. And so is Martinsburg, actually, but Martinsburg lost a lot of their, their funding a couple of years ago. And so their funding has actually been going down over the last couple of few years, where ours has been, has been increasing, so, you know, a little bit each year. Which we're very, very thankful for. But, but Cabell also has twice as many libraries. Uh, uh, they're able to run twice as many libraries. I think their budget is around, they're a little over four million dollars a year. And I'm pretty sure Canal is eight. Of all things, Dodgerge actually County has like the highest per capita for the state, cause they don't have a lot of people. And they have a lot of gas money. So it's a, it's a temporary being on the top.
You're saying Cabell and Canal, which you're not saying Charleston and Huntington. Do you think that the difference in funding is essentially because we are a municipal library system? That has extended out into the county, as opposed to being a true county system?
I think in part, yes. Um, the way their levies are structured, that well, they are both special law libraries. In the seventies, I think, the legislature allowed a number of special laws that mandated funding of certain libraries in the state. I know, right? And Morgantown is not one of them. There were nine. Uh, there's also a Supreme Court case, and so some of those libraries have now lost some of that funding. But their levies are structured differently, which is definitely, we were very cautious about the first renewal of our levy to not increase it. Because it does, it does grow a little bit each year, but it really was, in the beginning was set way too low. And um, if we wanna have a county-wide library system. Uh, cause the levy brings in about the same amount as we get from our state funding. And sig, and, and significantly less than what the city funds the library system at. So it, there, there is room for more county participation, either through the levy. Or um, support of county facilities, for sure.
You mentioned that you, you have an operations manager now for Morgantown. Do you?
Yeah.
Have or plan on having ones for the other locations, day-to-day operations?
We have a, we have branch supervisors for, for each location. So Morgantown was the only one that didn't have one. Yeah, it was like, each floor kind of got ran by a different person. And so it wasn't, uh, there wasn't a lot of continuity in, in how we moved forward with new services. How we treated patrons, and so having um, you know, a, a single person doing that should hopefully. Improve some of, you know, expectations and realities for staff, both sides of that coin.
And, sorry to ask so many questions. What, um, what, what did book donations look like? And what, what kind of books do you accept, don't accept? How can people do it?
Uh, the Friends of the Library um, handle all of the donated materials to the library. And the, pretty much all of them end up, you know, they deal with them either at a book sale. Or we have um, a place that we can ship them to that either finds other homes for them, and we get a tiny bit of money for it. Or recycles things that are no longer usable, um, either in content or condition. Uh, we will, we don't accept encyclopedias, uh, or magazines, um, or textbooks. But we'll take any hardbacks or paperbacks that are in good, are in usable condition.
Just to clarify, so do any of those end up actually in the library themselves, or do you just?
Very few of them. Um, we, we comb through them and look for things like replacement copies, you know, for popular books. If we've, something that's wore out, we'll, we'll pull from there. Uh, popular kids' books that we're always missing, the first in the series, um, those kinds of things. We, we will pull those out, and those do find their way into the collection. But I mean, we're not getting as many book donations as we used to, but some weeks, it's like thousands of books that come through the library. We just don't have the, have the space or the staff to, to go through it. All, every one of our library facilities is at a zero growth. And most of them really still need to be at negative growth, like, we, if we wanna bring new books in each month. Then other books have to leave the building to make room for them, which is just a stark reality of the library, that no one wants to. Talk about.
I guess just the thought I had, my, was not so much like people bringing books that they, you know, old books that they don't want anymore. But like, actually going to Barnes and Noble and buying a bestseller.
No, we usually just get the ones that they don't want anymore.
But, but you would appreciate this latter, or not?
Uh, no, we would appreciate the, the thought, but it's, it would be. If people want to help the library donations to the Friends of the Library, either books or money.
Money.
Is always appreciated, so that we can make sure we're not duplicating, cause if you've gone to the store and bought, bought it, most likely, we already have it on the, on the shelf. And so that way, we're not duplicating it. But we, but the, the good, nice new stuff, that sells quickly out of the book sale too, though, so it does have value.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Sarah?
Yes, Janie.
I, um, if you go back one slide.
To Vanessa?
For some reason, those books that are behind there.
Yeah.
The pigeon books.
Yeah. Mo Willam's pigeons, yeah.
All that series are very popular in our house. I don't know why that is such a popular book, but it is just so popular.
They're fantastic because they put the kid in the story, you, the, the pigeon talks to the kid through the whole story. So we read uh, Don't Let the Pigeon Drive the Bus, in which throughout the story, the pigeon
Pigeon keeps wanting to drive the bus.
Kids and it's like, please. And so then at, all the kids at the end got a certificate that said, I didn't let the pigeon drive the bus. For saying no, it's, it's hard for some kids to say no, there's always one that's just like, do it. They are, they are, they're great books, uh, they're fun read alouds. Abby Seifert was the person at Cheat who put together that program and just did a phenomenal job of of keeping eighty some people in a room smaller than this calm and and enjoying the story, uh, and yeah, they're, they're always a big hit, the Mo Willems books.
So I like how you phrase it that puts the kid in the book. And I think the other thing that happens is that they go through a full range of emotion.
Yeah.
And so they'll have something with exclamation points in big print and have something with a little bitty print, so it's fun. Once the child's learning how to read that they can um, they can do that. They can go through and pitch the big, big emotion and the little emotion and have that range because I don't think most books do that either.
Yeah, not, he, he's particularly good at it for sure, yeah.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. What you do is, is there anything that city council could do to help address some of the different concerns? You, you know, at the beginning you spoke of code of conduct. Obviously the book issue.
Budget concerns.
Money, of course. But i- if there's anything if you could share, and if you need to think about that, it's fine too, that we would be able to do to help support you and, and your efforts more.
Yeah, we've, we've been working, um, we appreciate cities putting the, the gate in between the two buildings, that has been really helpful, we've had had a lot of damage to um, electrical outlets and other things and keeping fire exits clear. That's been really helpful, so you know, we've got other projects like that in mind to help improve the uh, safety and security of the building. So you know. There's always big projects, like if anybody's got the budget for a brand new elevator just hanging around, like you know, those kinds of one time things. I mean, I know contributing more and more to an operating budget that then you feel beholden to makes people cautious and I understand that because I, as you say, have a budget as well. But we also, you know, having an opportunity to put those sorts of yearly projects in front of council too would be appreciated. You know, the elevators, hundred and twenty or so thousand dollars. Ours is original to the building, it's never been modernized as elevators should be. Uh, it was just extended when the second floor was put on, so that's definitely one we have our fingers crossed about, like we need to do it, but also.
When was the last time you got an estimate on that? That seems very low to me.
Well, the last, uh, uh, that was the updated estimate, actually, that's just for the modernization, that's not for the, that's not new, new, that's just a new brain for it, um, it's a. We get the lecture from them every time they come to fix it about how they can't find parts for it anymore and they have to go take parts off of other people's elevators. So that, that's definitely uh, moving up on the list, we've had a couple other things we've had to deal with first. But those kinds of things, uh, uh, opportunity for that and you know, just being um, being a part of the downtown conversation about how to make our downtown welcoming, how to uh, encourage more families, uh, you know, we're a big supporter of downtown businesses. We don't, we're, we're a part of that community as well, we want to see them thrive and flourish. We use, we, we use downtown businesses as prizes as much as we can for our, our programs and our promotions. They're our neighbors and our friends as well, so you know, being a part of those conversations and included in that is uh, is, is always helpful and uh, yes, budget, budget season is not far away, so I'll be back. But, but I mean, I, I appreciate the, the general support of, of council. Always, thank you.
Well, I appreciated your willingness, you introduced us, the mayor and I, to James and we had a what I thought was a nice and productive conversation with the city management and the police chief about some of your concerns and some of our concerns, so it was great to open up that line of communication and hopefully we can keep it open as you request. I really appreciate your book selection team because when you put the photo up, I was like, read that, read that, read that. I was one of the people that was very upset during COVID when the library was closed because I am the person that goes in and browses the new, the new selections and I don't know what I'm looking for when I go in, so. Yeah, I love the book selection team. If there's nothing else or nothing else that you would like to add, we can move along.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. That will bring us to our second presentation of the evening. A resolution of the city of Morgantown to achieve greenhouse gas reductions in support of the Paris Climate Agreement. Change our media out.
Someone had their hand up and you could just mention that they'll be, after this presentation, that they'll be.
At the conclusion of this presentation, we will have an opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to speak to address council. We just go through this presentation here. With the chair of the Morgantown Green Team. Hello, James.
Um, good afternoon, good evening, uh, my name is Jim Kautzen, I'm chair of the Morgantown Green Team. As you may be aware, the Green Team was established back in about two thousand nine, eight, somewhere in there. Uh, as a way to get citizen input and provide in, input on sustainability issues for the city of Morgantown. Fast forward to uh, two thousand fifteen and President Obama went to Paris and signed on to the Paris Climate Agreement, which committed the countries of the world to strive to reduce greenhouse emission, gas emissions and keep the climate from exceeding two degrees Celsius in warming with a goal of keeping it under one and a half degrees Celsius. Two thousand seventeen, then President Trump withdrew the United States from the Paris Climate Agreement. And in response to that, a number of cities, including Morgantown, adopted resolutions essentially saying, we're still in and pledging to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions to make that commitment. The commitment basically called for a reduction of twenty eight percent of greenhouse gas emissions compared to the two thousand five baseline. The city of Morgan has been making progress on that. In Earth Day of last year, President Biden rejoined the Paris Climate Agreement and added a further goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by a target of fifty two percent by the year twenty thirty, so going from twenty eight percent by twenty twenty five up to fifty two percent by twenty thirty. We think that that is an important goal. So our resolution basically asks for three things, number one, that council actually recommit to this goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by twenty eight percent by the year twenty twenty five. That's only about two and a half years from now, a little bit less than that. We would also recommend that council then adopt the further goal of the fifty two percent reduction by twenty thirty and direct the city manager to explore those cost effective options that might help achieve that. So um, what have we done so far? Two thousand nine was an energy services contract that resulted in fairly significant energy savings and upgrades of a number of buildings. Since then, there've been a number of other upgrades of various buildings. There have been a few uh, high fuel efficiency vehicle purchases, not very many in recent years. One key step was that after several years of discussions, Mon Power, our local electric utility did establish a tariff to allow LED streetlights as opposed to the metal halide and mercury vapor lamps that are currently being used. Beginning about a year and a half ago, the city engaged in energy benchmarking. Establishing energy efficiency goals and energy consumption for most of the city buildings. I like to use this chart, it's basically a summary of four of the city's largest electric meters. The city hall building, the airport office, the city garage and the public safety building. And those are the big energy meters, if you look at the electricity consumption. Those four are more electricity than most of the rest of the city put together, so um, it's a pretty good start. As you can see, in two thousand nine, after the energy conservation measures were installed, we saw a fairly significant drop. There was another fairly significant drop in between twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, thank you COVID. And there've been incremental increases and improvements in efficiency ever since. I am looking forward to getting data from this year. My suspicion is that a lot of the twenty nineteen drop was simply city staff working from home and they're paying their electric bills out of their home instead of the city paying for them, thank you COVID. But we'll see. This chart basically shows where we have to go and where we've been. The first bar on the left is our estimate of the two thousand five greenhouse gas emissions inventory. Something around seventy eight hundred tons per year of greenhouse gas equivalents. Based on some of the energy conservation measures, uh, we have already dropped that about nineteen percent. We still have ways to go to get to the twenty twenty five target of around fifty eight hundred tons per year. The bar on the right would be the twenty thirty target of thirty eight hundred tons per year. That would represent a fifty two percent reduction from the two thousand five baseline. That's our goal. How do we do that, you might ask? I'm glad you asked. Step one, by far, the most cost effective way to do that is to continue investing in energy efficiency. Better insulation, more efficient light bulbs, weather stripping, you know, a new furnace that's more efficient. Those are boring maintenance things and that's where you get the most bang for the buck. Those are the ones that save you money. Some of the earlier councils were very pleased with the Green Team because when we came with our proposals, we saved the city forty thousand dollars a year and very few people really come to council and say, we want to save you money. So um, I can't guarantee that that will continue. Some of the other options, if we were able to convert our streetlights to LEDs, that one step by itself would allow us to meet the twenty twenty five goal. That's a big chunk of greenhouse gas emissions. We could have city purchase solar panels, either on the city garage or on other facilities, putting them on rooftops. Probably a more cost effective approach is the power purchase agreement. Rather than the city pay the upfront cost of buying solar panels, we sign an agreement with another supplier that would install the solar panels and sell the electricity to the city. It would be a long term contract, but it'd be an annual cost rather than a big upfront capital expenditure. There are other types of green E certificates that would do the same thing. Most recently, Mon Power has proposed some solar farms at Fort Martin and other nearby facilities. They are offering a premium price, it'd be about forty percent above the current residential rate, so um, it is not the most cost effective option, but uh, it's one where all you have to do is sign the contract with your current supplier. Fuel efficiency criteria for city vehicles. Currently, as I understand it, purchasing policies do not actually consider vehicle fuel efficiency. And transportation fuels are the single largest chunk of America's greenhouse gas emissions at this point. Another option is to go to zero emissions vehicles, electric vehicles and other similar types of vehicles. And there are a number of incentives to do that. Help is available and I've only got about two slides left, so this will be short, but um, one option. The Appalachian Solar Finance Fund is funded through various grants from a nonprofit organization. Their goal is to provide technical assistance and grants to support solar installation. Especially for government agencies, nonprofit organizations, et cetera. They are not going to cover the entire cost, but they can, they like to leverage funds where their grant support tips the balance to make a profit, a project profitable and, and worth going. Another one, last year's Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act had a number of funding opportunities for zero emission building codes. City of Morgantown does not have a zero emissions building code yet, but wouldn't it be great to have one of those? There's infrastructure funding for EV charging stations and electric vehicles. There's funding for energy efficiency investments, then especially for planning opportunities. And so there would be some new money that's coming down the pipeline in the next few years from that one. The big one was just passed in August, the Inflation Reduction Act, which included a number of things for healthcare, Medicare financing, et cetera, but the big chunk of their funding was for greenhouse gas emissions. The one that makes me smile the most is a thirty percent investment tax credit for renewable energy sources. Which doesn't help the city at all because you don't pay income taxes, but they included a provision for what they call a direct pay option. The city can get the same thirty percent cut on their purchase of solar panels or renewable energy efficiencies as a direct pay option to uh, government agencies and nonprofit organizations, non governmental entities, et cetera. So that is now available and that tips the balance for a lot of solar energy that might be very cost effective. But it gets better. If Morgantown qualifies as an energy community. And we can cite those types of solar farms on brownfield sites, coal mines, nearby power plants, et cetera. That have a dependence on fossil fuels. There's an additional ten percent on top of that thirty percent. And another ten percent bonus if we qualify as a low income community. And a third ten percent bonus if the project meets certain requirements for domestic manufacturing, American steel and components and so on. And if we can put all those together, suddenly that's almost free electricity. A sixty percent cut on that um, makes that a very cost effective option. The bad news is that just passed in August and the various government agencies are just now getting around to the rules for setting that up. But in twenty three, twenty four, twenty twenty five, certainly, um, those are options that the city needs to look at very carefully as ways to take advantage of some of these fundings. So um, my final slide, how do we move forward? Step one is for council to establish the policy. Uh, and that's where you need to go and that's what this resolution that we are offering would have you do. There are some advantages to that, the city of Morgantown will get statewide leadership bragging rights. And the city has actually been one of only two cities in West Virginia that had signed on to that original twenty seventeen National Mayor's Climate Agenda. And so we would be taking that next step. It does create jobs, especially in the energy efficiency area, it leads to cleaner air. It leads to happy kids. Earlier this month in Egypt, President Biden and others were in, uh, for, at the COP twenty seven meetings. The nations of the world got together to talk about climate change. And I saw one article that suggested failure to act on climate change could be considered child abuse. Because it is our children that will be paying the consequences for that. The cons, uh, well, the easy stuff we've plucked. Now, the advantage of plucking the low hanging fruit is that it often grows back and new technology is available that might make things cost effective that five years ago weren't, but a lot of what we're talking about will actually cost some money. Fighting climate change is probably the toughest thing that America has ever had to do. There is no single silver bullet that will require everyone to do their share. And some of that will not be free, at least in the short term. The second, and I have to admit that there will be certain political. there will be certain political risks. This is West Virginia. Um, there have been times when actions to address climate change has resulted in some pushback. And that is one of the things that you should take very seriously. Want all you guys to be here for years and years and years, even if some of you think it's ready to time to retire, um, but there will certainly be some, especially in the fossil fuel industry, who think that this may not be the direction we should be going. The Morgantown Green Team urges your adoption of that resolution. And I think that's my slides. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions or talk about whatever else you have on your agenda.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions?
I very much appreciate and, um, wish you to continue your work and, uh, appreciate you all, um, your persistence in bringing this forward, in doing the work that you do, that right now for the city is a moment when we are already renovating buildings. And so, um, several buildings, and so we are looking at furnaces. We are putting in new structures, um, both on our recreation side and city side and some of the, uh, fire stations. So we're really at a moment when these types of considerations are kind of ripe. And so while we are making those purchases, if we're thinking about energy consumption through each one and what we can do to, um, make use of what we're already doing, we're already making those expenses, um, we're already buying chillers at the ice arena and all those things are going to happen in this year, that while we're doing it, we could be following these types of, um, criteria and making sure that we're, um, looking out for the next generation. So from one person's perspective, whatever risk, we've already signed on to the first Paris Accord. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, the original Paris Accord, I'm not sure that, um, the political fallout from, from looking it over again and, and, and really buckling down at this point. Um, it's not against anyone, it's just for the future. So, love to hear what my colleagues think.
I appreciate that, and, and I certainly agree that as new facilities come online, finding more energy-efficient ones are the right thing to do. That is by far the cheapest bang for the buck that you are likely to get. Um, and those kinds of actions are likely to have the city meet that twenty twenty-five goal. Uh, it will require some investments and take it to the next level and some whole new kinds of thinking to get to the fifty-two percent reduction by twenty thirty.
Any other questions for Jim?
Just a comment. Having worked with you in the past, also having benefited from your past, this organization, the Green Team's recommendation, and having that proven to be accurate and beneficial to the community, I want to express my appreciation and hopefully, I guarantee that I will at least support this activity and, and, uh, I look forward to the fact that you're out there watching out and pointing us in the right direction. Please do continue, and thank you very much for what you've done.
Thank you.
Do you have other, pardon, do you have other members of your team that you want to have stand up and be recognized?
I'm Chris Markzitis, and, uh, welcome back. Haven't seen you in a few months.
I'll say something during the public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That brings us to the end of our presentations this evening, and we will move into the public portion, uh, subject to rules established by council, which I haven't received, but I assume that would be four minutes to speak. Please state your name and address and, um, keep things non-personal.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mark Brizitas, seven thirty-four Courtney Avenue, Morgantown. First of all, thank you for the work you do. I know a little bit about that. I want to start off with thanking Jim Kotzen for his incredible work on the Green Team. We are very fortunate, as, um, Bill Kuecky just mentioned, to have him. I was at a conference recently where a figure for volunteer hours came up. The average volunteer hour nationwide is worth twenty-one dollars and seven cents. It's amazing how precise that is. A man with a PhD who's incredibly knowledgeable about his subject, the value of his time is enormous and just deeply grateful for everything he offers. Second thing is, climate change is the issue of our time. It's the most important issue we will confront. If you care about anything else, uh, not related to climate change, well, guess what? It does relate to climate change. Even libraries, the homeless situation, all issues are tied to climate. We depend on a, a climate to survive. What the Green Team has recommended isn't going to save the world. It's not even going to save Morgantown per se, but it's doing, it would be doing, and I hope the council will adopt the fifty percent goal of reductions, uh, in greenhouse gas emissions since two thousand five. It will be doing our part to contribute to solving this incredibly difficult, incredibly challenging issue. And it's only, of course, with city-related buildings and vehicles, but it'll set a great example to the people in our town. If we can do it as a city, we're saying to, uh, our fellow citizens, you can do it too. The city has done this, you can do it. And technologies are becoming cheaper, and there, thankfully, there's funding, as Jim Kotzen just mentioned, that will help things. Um, but I hope you all will take this very important leap to, to tackle what we can of this enormous and meaningful problem. I, I met Jim Kotzen twenty-plus years ago because I was worried about a climate issue. Uh, he was working then on, uh, environmental issues, and it had to do with my children and worried about their future, and I'm still worried about their future. And I'm worried about all of the young people I work with and that you all work with and are, um, are concerned about as in your positions. And we owe it to them to do our best. So I hope you will, um, will do your best here to follow the Green Team's recommendations. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mark. Any other member of the public?
Good evening, council. Uh, Jamie Summerlin, two oh nine, Kingwood. I'm going to read my stuff so that I stay under the time here, but I do have a few things I wanted to bring up tonight. A couple of things before I get to my main points. I want to recognize the volunteers at Wesley United Church this past week. Amazing to see so many come out on Thanksgiving morning to support our community. Proud, my family's being able, or is able to participate. Karen and her crew did a great job. Twelve hundred plus people being served that day. I also hear that holiday lighting downtown has been discussed, especially after seeing so many photos of cities around West Virginia decorating even just one street to make it a destination for locals and visitors to come to. Exciting to see where that goes. It brings people and communities together, and it's something I'd love to see Morgantown do. You can even use LED lighting to drive down energy consumption. Uh, so my main points, three things I wanted to bring up tonight, and then I'll address these as time goes on. Uh, number one, uh, the Morgantown three one one app that was just released. Happy to see it. I looked at other cities around the country using it. I'm excited to see it being used here. A couple of points with it, however. Uh, it has already been used. If any of you have downloaded it and checked it out, uh, it can and will be used in various fashions, as you've already seen, as, and as I checked out some of the other cities around the country as well. However, it will have the opportunity to be abused. Uh, it needs to be used for real issues and not become a tool for immaturity and divisiveness. Also, it will give the county the opportunity to be held accountable for the legitimate issues that get reported. Not only do citizens need to be mature in reporting, but the city needs to accept responsibility and address the issues that are brought up. It's all out there in the open now, so I'm excited to see where it goes. At our Greenmont Neighborhood Association meeting last night, which has membership growing by leaps and bounds, by the way, the app was discussed and the citizens were excited to start using it. And with Sarah's presentation a few minutes ago, she brought up issues that have been brought up in the app as well, and I look forward to seeing the City of Morgantown continue to make progress on those items. Secondly, uh, and I'm going to hit a couple of different topics here, scheduling. In July of twenty twenty, a year-long trial of four-day work weeks started. I could not find where it was talked about again after that, although I probably didn't search deep enough for it. Not sure if it was voted upon in July of twenty-one, but I didn't live in the city at the time, uh, so I didn't pay much attention. Now that I live here, there have been a couple of things that have come up that I'd like to address with it. Quoting from the article, "The idea of a focused work week was brought forward by city staff as a way to save costs, improve employee productivity, and help create a better work-life bi, balance in employees' lives." Also, no cost to the city to conduct the pilot program, so a few questions. Do we have an accounting as to how much money it has saved? How are we to contact people when things do happen on Fridays, which is not only busy with football weekends, but also two weeks ago when the gravel was spilled on Brockway in Hogback Turn? I wasn't sure who to call after I took a video of the gravel that had been just dumped a few minutes earlier. A motorcycle would have certainly been laid down if they'd have went through it at that time. I reached out to the county to get it addressed since it is a DOH-maintained, actually unmaintained DOH road. Uh, I had to get my shot there, but it still took the DOH until the following Thursday to clear up. But who are we to contact on Fridays when something like that happens? Has the money that has been saved come at a cost of helping the citizens of the cities on Fridays whenever we sometimes need support? On scheduling, point number three, I'd like to propose something that we, that won't have the opportunity to be dealt with for a couple more years, but I would like to see the city move to a normal election cycle. Star City just voted in overwhelming fashion to move it. Forty-four percent of registered voters cast ballots in Star City. It passed with almost ninety percent in favor. Morgantown has almost twenty thousand registered voters, based on the last report I could find. Of those in the last special election, and I quote, "Voter turnout was low at seven point eight nine percent, but Wade's Center Office is always working to improve that number. I think moving to a normal election cycle will do two things immediately. Number one, it will accomplish higher voter turnout and engagement overnight and solve the address, or the, the issues, uh, that Mrs. Wade addressed. Secondly, to, to reference the previous point, when the city says they closed on Fridays to save costs, moving to a common election cycle will also save thousands of dollars, based on previous reporting I've read. I think that the city should absolutely move in that direction." And then the last thing I'll say, because I had to make a comment on this, and I do apologize for going over my time. While I understand the point of the presentation and know that things have to change, thanking COVID for dropping electric usage and CO2 emissions while millions died, I believe, is a misplaced thought process, and electric usage has dropped in Morgantown, I'm sure, because unfortunately, we've also lost a number of businesses in the area in the past couple of years. Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public wishing to address council? Seeing none, we will move on to our discussion items this evening. We have one, a resolution of the City of Morgantown to achieve greenhouse gas reductions in support of the Paris Climate Agreement. Is there any additional discussion?
Can I refer to the forward?
I would second.
Move to your agenda.
I said two points. One point is that it's important that we are actually measuring. This isn't like an empty, an empty gesture, that there's a lot of work that goes into measuring, um, like electric usage and so on, energy usage, and, um, and also it has potentially to save money in the long run.
All right.
Yes, move to the agenda.
Okay. Seems to be a general consensus to move that item to a future agenda. If there's nothing else for the good of council, we have an executive session scheduled.
Move to your, or move to, move to executive session?
Yeah, let's move to executive session.
Pursuant to West Virginia State Code, section six dash nine, A dash two, nine, move that we move to the executive session, and six dash nine, A dash four B now.
Perfect. Thank you, Brian.
Second.
And Dave. We are now in executive session.